Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas Marion Commission. This will serve as the work session for March tenth, twenty twenty-five. As always, we're gonna turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Charlie Davis. Still praying that Tyreek Hill gets transferred to the Pittsburgh Steelers.
Yes, sir.
Going to Atlanta.
Yeah, maybe. All right, um, the first one's item one, found on page four, a review of the February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Consent.
Mr. Gow.
Consent.
Ms. Moore.
Consent.
Mayor Protemp.
Consent.
Mr. Paul.
Consent.
Mr. Bailey.
Consent.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. City Manager.
Next is item two, found on page ten, discuss the lease agreement with Chris Rounds, the Georgia Warbirds Academy for building number four.
Good evening.
Good evening. Is this your first time presenting as the Assistant City Manager? No.
Depending on when you pick a date.
Okay, well, congratulations again.
Thank you, the official one, yes. Um, here tonight, Mr. Chris Rounds, um, he is wishing to lease one of the buildings at the airbase that we have available. I don't know if y'all remember it, one time we had a contract with Sadie's House, the Child Advocacy Center. They're no longer in that building. He wants to, um, lease that building for additional office space for the Georgia Warbirds Academy. Um, we typically lease it for seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. If you all are open to this, we would get a maintenance crew to go in and get it moving ready. Just walls need to be painted, carpet shampoo, a few little things, minor things repaired. We'll get that ready, get the contract drafted up, bring it back to you all, but I just need to know if y'all are open to this, to allow him to lease. If so, we would do, since this is aviation related, we would do a twenty-year lease, but we would do it in increments of five years. That way, we can determine if there's like, like, we do this typical for all the airport lease agreements. Um, if there's any problems or whatever, we can go back and assess it and just update it and determine if we need to keep going forward.
But you're, you're not asking for us to vote?
Yes, we are asking for you to vote.
Mr. Taylor, your department lead us through it.
Consent.
Mr. Gow.
Consent.
Ms. Moore. Mayor Protemp.
Consent.
Mr. Paul.
Consent.
Mr. Bailey.
Consent.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. City Manager.
Next item is item three, found on page twelve, discussion, discuss and seek approval resolution for the designation of downtown Douglas as a local historic district, Georgia.
Thank you. Um, this is the third time I told y'all before you, so tonight, um, to make it official, um, you, we're asking that the Marion Commission approve the resolution from the Historic Preservation Commission, which is one of the state requirements, that we have a resolution for them, um, officially designating, um, the downtown district as a local district.
Mr. Taylor, your department lead us through it.
Consent.
Mr. Gow.
Consent.
Ms. Moore.
Consent.
Mayor Protemp.
Consent.
Mr. Paul.
Consent.
Mr. Bailey.
Consent.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. City Manager.
Next, uh, the item four, found on page fourteen, discuss extension on the rehabilitation, lease agreement with Chris Rounds on the old hospital building that the World War Two Flight Training Base, Georgia.
All right, in addition to the, um, building we just discussed that Mr. Rounds want to lease, he's wanting to get another extension for the hospital building, that's the building on the end of the circle closer to, uh, the Fairfield Inn, um, to complete the rehab project that he started. Um, he started in twenty-two, since that time, we have allowed him a couple of extensions, but he's asking for six more months to go in and finish, uh, rehabilitating that building, so he can also use it as office space for the Georgia Warbirds Academy.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor, your department.
Um, Ms. Henderson, um, it's been a while, it's taken a while, you know, everything. We're gonna give him six months, six months.
Six months, yes, sir.
That's it, you know, uh, for us getting it where he need to be at, not, you know, he already been on this building, what, two years at most?
He's been rehabbing on it a couple of years, um, so yes, sir, this is what he said, six months, and then he should have it complete. If not, we can reassess, see what he has put into it, and see if we need to apply, prorate the rent to the other building, we'd have to decide it all out and probably come back before y'all, if he goes past that time.
Okay, well, what if he not completed in six months, then how we handle it, then, you know?
We will assess it and then come back before y'all for further determination, but, um, because of the investment he has put into that building, we'll have to make some sort of decision.
Okay, consent. Consent. Mr. Gow.
This is probably a typo, but I was just noticing, it said on September twenty-third, due to worsened condition of the classroom building and added damage from Hurricane Helene, I guess, the city commission terminated, the hurricane didn't happen until September twenty-seventh.
Twenty-six. Yes, I'm sorry, twenty.
So that's supposed to be like October or something?
That was when he came. I'm trying to remember the date, um, I have to go back, I'm sure that is a typo, 'cause it wasn't in September. If I'm not mistaken, maybe that was in December.
But he got, so they got, that's one of the reasons it slowed him down, they got damaged from the hurricane?
No, that, that is not what slowed it down.
Okay. Okay, but I guess I'm fine with it, six more months.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Moore.
I want an option on the table to consider longer than six months, six months from now, because of the hurricane, and because if I remember correctly, he came before us, and it was, uh, an adjustment made at that time, not sure of the date, but I want, when six months is up and we evaluate it, because of the moneyed investment, because how hard our city has been hit, I would want that option on the table that we consider to give him a little bit more, because we're still doing that in the City of Douglas with other things.
This is one of the builders at the airport, the other one that we came back to you, and I believe that was in December, and where we terminated that agreement. Yes. Um, maybe I did have it right, it was, I don't know, but anyways, the classroom building is the one that suffered more damage from the hurricane. The, the hospital building is one of the ones that did not have any damage as a result from the hurricane, so it had, didn't have any bearing on his continuing to do the work. He had already kind of slowed down with some of the work, so the Air Base Preservation Committee, who is like an advisory committee to you all, is their recommendation too, and this is what Mr. Rounds himself said, to give him six months, he's been working on it since twenty, twenty-two, so that's why staff's recommendation is coming from his request, six months. Yeah, that building didn't suffer any damage as a result of the hurricane. But it's up to you all.
Consent.
Dissent for now.
Consent, okay, we'll take that forward. You're good with the consent?
I'm good with consent, yes, sir.
Consent.
All right, we were not unanimous, we'll carry that one forward.
All right, next one is item five, found on page sixteen, adoption of a new residential commercial design guidelines for all local historic districts, Georgia.
Um, the Historic Preservation Commission, along with staff, we recommend tonight that the Marion Commission approve the, um, uh, the guidelines, the residential and commercial guidelines for the residential, which is Gaskin Avenue, that historic district, and the downtown, uh, historic district.
Again, Mr. Taylor.
Consent.
Mr. Gow.
Consent.
I need clarity, to say again exactly what we're consenting or not consenting to about the historic on Gaskin.
We received a grant, um, every so many years, we have to update our guidelines, and, um, we've got the grant, we've, um, had the guidelines produced by a professional firm, so that we publicized and went through the different steps with the State Historic Preservation Division, so it's time now that y'all have to vote on them, so they'll be effective.
Okay, consent.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Protemp.
Consent.
Mr. Paul.
Consent.
Mr. Bailey.
One question, uh, these are going on up on the North Gaskin, you know, now, and, uh, did, did those, looks like apartment unit, so, do those units have to have the, uh, this approval?
Yes, for, um, those are, those are approved, um, in that district.
They are approved?
Yes.
Based on what's on the book right now?
Not based on these new guidelines, but anything future will be based on those guidelines.
Got, they, there's, there's, there's nothing historical about the design, anything that had to, that had to be, be in play?
Right, and it, and in the district, it doesn't per se have to be. It's more or less to protect the truly historic things, there's forty, fifty years of old that have significant roles in our history, that's more or less what the historic HPC is in place for. They don't make a big fuss over new designs and development, they just like to know about it.
Okay, I'll consent.
Consent, thank you. Next item, Mr. City Manager.
All right, next item is item six, found on page eighteen, approval of street closures for twenty twenty-five, Georgia.
All right, we have a full list in here, I don't know if y'all want me to read them off, or if you have read them, but this is a list of, uh, street closings that our department know about for the twenty twenty-five year, we're asking for your approval. You want me to read them off?
This is, Mr. Taylor, I think it's the same ones.
Consent.
I don't think I believe it's the same yet. I think these are basically the same ones.
A few different events, but like, um, the Wings and Things Festival, I just call out names, First Baptist Church, they have different events during the year, the Gopher Tourists Festival, Juneteenth, the Christmas Parade, um, at Park Plaza, you know, they have a couple of events there each year, South Georgia College Graduation, um, those are the typical kind of requests that we get in a year's time, so rather than coming back each time, since we know about them in advance, we just go ahead and bring you a slate, a slate of those closings.
Sounds good. Mr. Taylor.
Uh, chief, everything good?
Consent.
Consent. Mr. Gow.
Consent.
Ms. Moore.
Consent.
Mayor Protemp.
Yes, sir, consent.
Mr. Paul.
Consent.
Mr. Bailey.
I don't need to vote, Mr. Mayor, I'm a member of First Baptist Church.
Okay, so we have to carry that one forward, so you can do that disclosure.
Thank you.
Next item.
All right, next item is item seven, found on page twenty, discuss the FY twenty-five sports equipment bid, Anthony.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Uh, we're here to seek approval to purchase, uh, Parks and Recs, uh, equipment for the upcoming year, baseball, softball, basketball, football, and soccer equipment. The bid was broke down into three categories, baseball and softball, the grand total was twenty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-seven cent. The basketball equipment was eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-six cent, and the football equipment was twenty-one thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-eight cent, for a grand total of fifty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-one cent.
Yes, sir.
Madam, uh, your department consent? Mr. Paul.
Consent.
Mr. Bailey. Ms. Moore.
Question, who do we purchase that equipment from?
It's, uh, we sent the bid out to thirty-two vendors, we had ten respond, uh, and they're just, there's a list of vendors on the tabulation.
Who do, have we decided who we going with?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Who we going with?
It's broke down on all your tabulations.
Cool, okay.
So each one is, each one is listed for each category.
I got it, which one am I hitting? Consent.
Mr. Gow.
Consent.
Mr. Taylor.
Consent.
Good deal. Next item, Mr. City Manager.
All right, next item is item eight, found on page twenty-five, discuss FY twenty-five sinkhole lift station replacement pump bid, Anthony.
Again, we're here to seek approval to purchase a, uh, lift, lift station replacement pump for Sinkhole Road. We sent out the bid to eight vendors, only had one person respond to it. It was Templeton Associates in Swanee, Georgia, and the price is forty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Mr. Bailey.
Consent, we got to have it back there.
Okay, Mr. Paul.
Consent.
Mayor Protemp.
Consent.
Ms. Moore.
Consent.
Mr. Gow.
Consent.
And Mr. Taylor.
Consent.
Good deal. Do you have any general comments?
We have no general comments, and we have one, uh, we got three, um, put under city manager updates. Nikki threatened me with my life if I didn't read them off to you. Um, one item is, she said at y'all's desk, there are packets for the ones attending upcoming ECG, um, annual convention, and the newly elected training. There's also the signup sheets for the GMA Conference in June that is held in Savannah, so please complete them, return them, and I think most of these directed to you, Mayor. Um, and Winetta has up there the financial disclosure forms, up there for y'all's, um, uh, for the elected, for y'all, turning y'all's financial disclosure forms.
What's our deadline on that?
July. July, July, I need to, yeah, let's just go.
We, we're being a little, a little far this, this time compared to last year's, though. But that's, that's the three, sir.
Thank you.
The, in, July first or last?
July first.
Okay, that's what I was saying. Thank you.
Well, Friday would be good.
Early July.
We're good, we're good. All right, uh, we're going to adjourn and go directly into the meeting. You're good with Mr. Paul, Mayor Protemp? Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gow, you're good with that? Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
You're good? All right, all hearts and minds cleared? We stand adjourned of the work session. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas Marion Commission. This will serve as our work, uh, our regular meeting for March the tenth, twenty twenty-five. Next item on the agenda is Commissioner Moore, uh, with the invocation.
Quick question, I'm a preacher, okay, so those of you who, so those of you, I might lose sound, we're just, you know, all of those of you who feel like it. Those of you who want to close down, you can, those of you who need to, hey, let me kick out a door. Father God in your name, we thank you when we coming for you, when the armor manners, we know how, we yet thanking you for the people that are gathered here. We thank you, Father God, that through the storm and through the rain, God, we still yet standing. We thank you, God, we realize that we are stronger together. We realize, God, that we're their strength, when we're unified, we're even stronger. So, Father God, I pray that this governing body tonight use wisdom, courage, and strength to make proper decisions, let it be about our people and the constituents that we serve. May we use principles and integrity as we make decisions that affect our city and our county. And God, because we love you and praise you, we pray for all of those who are sick. We pray for that young man that was the department head who had a stroke. We pray, Father God, we pray for any among us that are sick in their bodies. And Father God, because we love you and we praise you, we give you honor, we give you glory, and we realize that in this city, that people's lives are depending on us. And one more thing I want to pray for, God, we got senior citizens and older people who cannot move that trash to the road, they have no family, no loved ones. I read about an extension date and a time date. I pray, Father God, that there are people in this city that are gonna go to those places where people cannot move those trees and those things to the road, and that we have people here in this city who's gonna help, so that they will have opportunity to be glorified and you honored. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. If you would, please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. As always, the dynamic Navy Junior ROTC from Coffey High School will lead us through it, and tonight, we have Petty Officer Second Class Underhill and Semen Apprentice Meyer to lead us through it.
Present arms. Present arms. I believe in the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
All right, you may be seated. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the Order of the Agenda.
Same here.
Second, it's been motioned in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda items, as always. Hold on for a second. I don't see my basketball teams on here. Hold on. So we need to bike up, we need to bike up. We need to, uh, insert the, uh, at number five.
Recognition.
Recognition of our championship teams. We're gonna do that. So, with that, uh, with that addendum to that, we're gonna re, uh, we're gonna reconsider the approval of the Order of the Agenda.
I'll make the motion to amend the agenda.
Second.
It's been motioned in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, with the addition of number, making it number five and pushing everything else downward, uh, we are going to recognize our state champions, so at this time, I would like to have the approval of the Order of the Agenda with the amendment.
Approved, or, excuse me, I make a question that we approve.
It's been motioned in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, baby, here we go, this is what we talking about, championship time, here we go. And recognition of not one state champion, but two. Make it do what it do.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On behalf of the Douglas Coffey County Parks and Recreation, uh, we have three teams that actually went to state, we have three teams that won district here, um, the last weekend in February, we had our ten U girls, our ten U boys, and our fourteen U boys all advanced to state. Our ten U girls went to, um, Tocco, Georgia, and they didn't do quite as well as they wanted, but they did place third, and that's a very successful program. Um, this is the first time our ten U girls ever went to state.
That's what I'm talking about, right there.
And they came back with third place, so we want to congratulate them.
Absolutely.
And Teria Fields and Shekka Wilson. And I'm gonna call their names out, we got Macy, Booiz, Jakira Birch, Valerie Claiat, Laney Justice, Kenley King, Passion McDuffie, Zaya Mobley, Kayla Powell, Samantha Stewart, and Chloe Wilson, Coach Anteria Fields and Shekka Wilson, that's the ten U girls.
Good deal.
And we did have one little girl, um, she was a starter, and she was very, very, very good, but the week after they won district, she got pushed off the slide at school and broke her ankle, so she couldn't participate in the state, so.
Right.
Anyway, we want to wish her a speedy recovery.
Amen.
All right, now, we got our ten U boys, state champions. Our coach, Brandon Row.
Come up here.
Also, Brandon won first place in the league, he won district champ, and he also won state champ, and this is his first year coaching, so we want to congratulate him on that as well. Um, Brandon's assistant coach, Mr. Ray Fossil, and as I call your name, guys, just raise your hand so the audience can know who you are, we got Jordan Carter, Kason Coward, Kobe DeBerry, Takorian Ellerton. Takorian, Kobe Fossil, Jasper Hopkins, Christopher Park, Kayden Pritchard, Jeremy Speed, and Coach Ray Fossil. Again, twenty, twenty-five, ten U boys champion, they went to, um, Calhoun, almost in Alabama, but they did a very great job, and we want to thank our coaches and our parents for traveling with them. They had to travel, sure. Parents, if y'all want to get some pictures.
I can see him now, standing right where you are. All right, look at him, ready.
Look this way, now.
We're good? Commissioner McNeil, what's that?
Yes, I just asked the guys on the commissioner for Parks and Recreation, I just want to say thank you all for all you do, your hard work, your practice, and the coaches for all you do, too. Thank you.
All right.
Our next group is our fourteen U boys.
Stand face, y'all stand face.
This is back-to-back state champions, this group of guys won last year, twelve U, and then they won again this year, fourteen U. And the coaches from this is, this is their third year winning state champion, Mr. Rakim Park and Martell Jordan, and also added to the coaches staff was Adrian Wilkinson this year, but again, fourteen U boys, state champions, Rakim, Martell.
All right, folks, this is royalty here. This is royalty here.
He's got the heart. He's got the heart.
Hey. This is royalty here. I'm getting a whole show. I'm getting a whole show. Hey, y'all make sure y'all get this. Hey, hold on, let me do like Brandon.
And also, while the guys, while the guys are coming, we got several compliments on how well behaved and well-trained this group of boys are.
Y'all straight. I want to see y'all on the back row.
They were just amazed how, um, well behaved they were, and how, how they were just so pleased with the behavior of these young guys, and we are very pleased with them representing Douglas. Okay, we have Adrian Falk. He's not here. So Darian Hancock, Isaiah Harold, Kayden Jackson, Javon Jordan, Mikel Jordan, Armani Manning, Josiah Sims, Mikel Stone, and Zaylan Ward. Again, our coaches, Rakim Park, Martell Jordan, and Adrian Wilkinson, fourteen U, twenty twenty-five state champions.
Yes, just that time, see you, Coach, you're my next state, don't, 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 who coached you?
I got three grandsons on here, and I just want everybody to know they got their skills. I did, I played basketball, too. Charlie did not play basketball.
Landy said she did, her fault.
That's right.
Landy, if they was well behaved, how can they be your children?
We got wounded almost, someone almost broke his nose. But he recovered real quick.
I sure hope y'all gonna properly have a wooden bench.
Commissioner McDee?
Yes, sir, I know, same thing, guys, I just appreciate all your hard work you do in St. Douglas. You talk things very, very well, and practice and all the stuff you do for us, okay? You said this is the third time we do?
Yes, this is royalty.
We've created a legend here now, there's expectations, guys, okay?
So, one of the things I always like to say is that our youth needs more champions and less critics. And what I mean is, don't be so quick to criticize, get in there and help out. So I want you to understand something, that without the parent's support, none of this is possible, 'cause none of these guys up here have a driver's license. So somebody has to bring them to and from practice, and we are grateful. But on top of that, our coaches, I want y'all to come up here, our coaches. Without these coaches volunteering their time, season in and season out. Every time we have any type of sports season, the Parks and Recreation is asking for coaches. Hey, we need coaches, we, we need somebody to coach, we need somebody to coach, we need somebody to coach. I am grateful, and we are indebted to the coaches for stepping up, volunteering your time, and putting in all this time and energy with our youth. We are grateful, and we really appreciate y'all, thank you. All right, look like everybody's leaving. All right, here we go. Commissioner Moore? Okay. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda items. As always, we'll have the City Manager to place those items, uh, the items that were placed on the consent agenda and read them all for transparency. Mr. City Manager?
Uh, Mayor Council, we have six items coming over on the consent agenda, and as stated, I'll read them all. First was item one, uh, approval of the February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five meeting minutes. Next was item two, approval of the lease agreement with Chris Rounds, Georgia Warburg, Warburg Academy for building number four. Third item was approval of the resolution for the designation of downtown Douglas as a local historic district. The next was item five, approval of the, uh, adoption of the new residential and commercial design guidelines for all local historic districts. Next item was item seven, approval of FY twenty-five sports equipment bid. And the last item was item eight, approval of FY twenty-five sinkhole lift station replacement pump bid.
At this time, I entertain a motion for the items placed on the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been motioned in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, for our work session items brought forward.
All right, Mayor Council, we have two items coming forward. The first one was item four from the work session, uh, discussed extension of rehabilitation lease agreement with Chris Rounds for the old hospital building there at the World War II Flight Training Base. Georgia?
Um, here before you two are on tonight to request that we allow Mr. Chris Rounds a six-month extension to finish the rehabilitation project on the, um, old hospital building at the airbase.
At this time, I entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been motioned in second, any further discussion? It's been motioned in second, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, Mr. City Manager.
All right, next, next item was item six, found on page eighteen, discuss and seek approval of the street closures for twenty-twenty-five.
Here tonight to request that Mayor Commission approve the list of street closing for all the upcoming events, um, that we're aware of for the twenty-twenty-five year.
Mr. Bailey?
I need to do, uh, not vote, I'm a member of First Baptist Church.
Okay. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved, Mayor, with that.
Second.
It's been motioned in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Any other work session items?
No, sir, that's all the items from the work session.
Any staff comments?
No, sir.
At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, we stand adjourned.